Be as efficient as we possibly can, yet being thorough. Or is it I want, I don't want efficiency to get in the way of us getting the information that we need. So the first thing is I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask for the approval of the minutes of November 21st.
Second.
Thank you. I move the minutes. Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes carry. The other thing is we're going to address the policy calendar. And of the first item, and it's, there were some details, and we're going to work to getting us, the committee, more details in advance, but there's some details on the resolution of naming the ConEd Endowment Scholarship Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice.
Good evening. The first resolution is to name the ConEd Endowed Scholarship Fund at John Jay. ConEd has provided $120,000 to support STEM majors at John Jay. They are doing this both at John Jay, as well as Medgar Evers, which is the following resolution.
Any questions? First, let me get a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain. Policy item B2 is a resolution requesting the naming of the ConEd Scholarship Endowment Fund at Medgar Evers College. And then Vice Chancellor Gallo will again provide a little background on that item.
This is very similar to the first resolution. This one's just at Medgar Evers. Again, it is to support STEM majors, a very generous $120,000 pledge from ConEd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain again. Didn't have enough material, any enough time. Item, policy item B3 is a resolution requesting the naming of the Susan Gardner, or Gardner, I'm sorry, Class of 63 Faculty Office on the fifth floor of the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College. Again, Vice Chancellor Gallo will provide some background on this item.
As many of you are aware, Hunter College has done an extensive campaign to renovate the library, the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library. This is a $25,000 gift from Susan Gardner, in honor of a former faculty member, Beatrice Heislop, who Susan Gardner credits with being a mentor to her.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee. Any discussion?
Does this meet the CUNY gifting standards and protocols?
It does, and we have approved other namings at this level as well.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion items? Nope? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain for the same reason. Policy item B4 is a resolution requesting the naming of the Joe Brogan Constitutional Policy Scholarship Endowment Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Vice Chancellor Gallo, can you give us some background on this?
Sure. The Jones Day Foundation is making this gift in honor of their former managing partner, Stephen Brogan. Stephen Brogan led the firm Jones Day for about 20 years. Stephen has asked the foundation to create this scholarship in honor of his father, who's a former member of the New York Police Department, where he served as a lieutenant in the 26th Precinct in Harlem. Lieutenant Brogan connected with communities, protected society, and strengthened the partnership between law enforcement and the public.
I move the approval, I mean, I move policy item B4. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And again, I'm abstaining for the same reason. This motion carries. Policy item B5 is a resolution requesting the naming of the Leonard Lauder Exhibition and Catalogue Fund at Hunter College. Again, Vice Chancellor Gallo, can you give us some background on this?
My pleasure. Mr. Lauder is making another generous gift to the Hunter College Foundation. This one is to support exhibitions and catalogs for the art galleries and for students in the advanced certificate program there. This is in addition, as you know, to the $52 million gift he made in December.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposition? No? Again, I abstain for the same thing. Didn't have enough information or enough time. With no other items on the policy calendar, I will now move to the information items on the agenda. We have two presentations today from Vice Chancellor Junco, and again, from Vice Chancellor Gallo. Our Vice Chancellor of Communications, Maite Junco, is going to provide her report to the committee. Maite?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to just talk a little bit as a follow-up to the last presentat-- oh, hold on. As a follow-up to the last presentation, I'm going to talk about our, I'm going to give you a sneak preview of our upcoming campaign. It's going to be live next Monday, and the main message of it is degrees without the debt. I just want to give you a sense of the scope of it. This is an out-of-door campaign, which means it'll be in the New York City subways, in the buses, in the bus shelters, in the Staten Island ferry terminals. Thank you, Michael, for the feedback the last time, and in billboards in the, in New York City highways. It'll be, there will be thousands of placements altogether. And then other placements that will come a little bit later, after the initial rollout, will be taxis, taxi tops, taxi TV, not only in New York City, but in other cities, as you see there, in Philadelphia, Chicago, Miami, New Orleans, Vegas, and San Francisco, in the LinkedIn YC digital boards, and eventually in television, both in the Spectrum, Univision, in Hulu, and also in radio, in, some in Spanish and some in English, as you see there, La Mega, iHeart, Hot 97, Spotify, and Univision Radio. And then, after, we sort of settled on our message for the campaign, but we still decided to survey our students. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we were on the right track, and we did a very, sort of a quick survey via our newsletter, and over 500, almost 500 students responded, and they, we asked them, sort of, why CUNY? Why did you come to CUNY? And students overwhelmingly said affordability was their top choice for coming to CUNY, but also cited the variety of our programs, the offering on our majors, that CUNY is in New York City, not surprisingly, that it's also for them located close to home, and also the diversity of the student body. So we just wanted to gut-check our work, and we're glad to sort of find the support of, in the students in the survey. And now, are you ready? One, two, three? Tun, tun. Degrees without the debt. These are some of the, this is the major, the main message of the campaign is degrees without the debt. Because it's so wide, there's many sizes to it, so these are some of the verticals, these are the bus, some of the, I think, the kiosks and the bus shelters. As you see, this one, the main is degrees without the debt, and over 28 world class majors and programs across 25 colleges in New York City. And some of the decks are different. You'll see 75% of CUNY students graduate with zero debt is the main one. This is another sort of look, so you can see, these are the platforms, the subway platforms, posters on the platform, this is print. These are the top of the subway cars. Some of the subway cars are going to have a couple of squares, some of them are going to have full half cars. These are for the half cars. The half cars, the top of the half cars will be this. These two messages here, here, you can see, we're bringing in the 67% of in-state graduates attend tuition-free, which we thought it was important to put out. And also, these are going to be in the half cars. These are sort of sub-messengers of the campaign. They zoom in in our faculty, you know, the prestige of our faculty, the, our work in making sure our students have, you know, career options and internships. And also, we wanted to focus that, that we, CUNY currently, you know, provides waivers for DOE students, and so we wanted to say that in terms of the application, for waiver for the application fee. So these are the other half of the cars, and that's, I'm going to stop there, just going to see any initial reactions. I just want to say that this is, this is spring, early spring, but we'll come back in the fall, you know, for either a new campaign or revamp campaign or something similar. We'll see how this goes. We'll, you see, they all have QR codes, so we're able to track the campaign as much as possible back to these ads.
Great. Any questions for Maite? Or Vice Chancellor?
Please.
Just one. Hi, my name is Maite Res, I'm the UFS representative, you know. I just had a question. On this, one of the first slides, it was mentioning the areas where we're advertising, and it said New York City, not New York State. And I know that SUNY's been doing a large advertising campaign that's inclusive of New York City, and so I was wondering how much we're doing in New York State in addition to the city.
I think in terms of this campaign, guys.
The five boroughs?
Five boroughs, I think is the strength of this campaign, is in the five boroughs, but we are, but that's a good point, and because it's, because this is out of doors, right? So it is, this is mostly, I think there were taxi tops, let's go back, just to be sure.
Thank you.
Subway. It was, no, but I mean, in terms of, I think this is what you.
Maybe.
Taxi tops, right, and taxi TV, they're very urban-ish in terms of, you know, where we can do the placement, but obviously, I just want to remind you that this can, this campaign, it's a branding campaign that supplements our main campaign, which is a digital campaign, where, is where we have the most, which has been running, and I presented and talked about, I should have started there, because this, in a sense, complements that, and that is ongoing, and I'm going to talk a little bit about it afterwards, so you, I have two or three slides left, but that's why, I'm sorry, so.
Perfect. No, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No, I just want to compliment you on the taglines. I mean, I like, I almost liked the second set more than the first one, because they.
It allows you to go more.
Right, but, but I really compliment you on that. And then the other thing I was going to say, and you answered it, I just want you to amplify it, is that it's February for six to eight weeks, but then you're going to do another one in the fall.
Right.
Because this is all enrollment-driven.
Yes, totally. This is, yeah, this is all enrollment, and I, in terms of thanking, I want to take the opportunity to thank the team who's here. Monica Tavares, Associate by Chancellor Alberto Maristani, who's the Creative Director, and Giomias, who's our Advertisement Management. This campaign has been done fully in-house, these are all our students, we photograph them ourselves, so we're proud, you know, to bring this, not having to go to an agency and just do it ourselves.
Just out of curiosity, Maite, is there, I mean, Vice Chancellor, is there going to be, is there ever, you know, like, these taglines are great, is there going to ever be, I'm just thinking of your earlier comment about online and our competitor, are we going to do anything to, to, to sort of drive our online or al-Wazir? Or something like that?
There's a marketing campaign just for that.
Okay, good. All right.
Yes, there will be a full online, yes, I actually saw Kim in the elevator, we're talking about that, a percent about that in the.
No, about our online, our online offerings?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Well, fully, because that's being.
And there we also.
Yes, that's going.
Going all over.
Yes.
To five back.
Yes.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
I can't stand when I see it on the hutch. Anyway.
So I just want to, just, I just want to recap, I'm not going to play this again, but you may remember I played some of these ads, right? In the last, at the last meeting, and just a little bit of how they are doing. We, this is digital, right, all digital, and we've had almost 50,000 application clicks start from it. These are our top performers, our Google search, Facebook, Instagram, and Snapchat, and the, and these are the different campaigns, undergrad, two-years, and transfers. And then, a little bit other metrics, we've also heavily promoted our grad studies for, like, learn more and info sessions, those also had a lot of clicks, there's 57,000 clicks there, fueled by Facebook and Instagram. We also helped the CUNY, you know, we're supportive of the CUNY Reconnect effort, and I don't know if you've heard about that earlier today, but there's some good news there, we were happy to be part of that, we helped a little bit on the CUNY Tuesday. And actually, we just started to put some funding on YouTube, and we're seeing great, great results there. You can see over half a million views in support of Reconnect, undergrad, and two-year, and the two-year effort.
Does CUNY, does CUNY have a YouTube channel?
Of course, yes.
You can watch all the board meetings.
I know, okay, but, oh, look.
Yes, I should say, we've had it for a long time.
How exciting.
It's pretty, it's, it's, it's stronger now, I will just say that.
Yeah, and I just found out we had one in our agency.
Yeah.
Could see how much I look at it. Good, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
How is it for, for multi-language?
Yes, so that came, that question had come up, there is some, so in this campaign, we have Univision TV and some Univision Radio, so we have some Spanish there. We just need, and we just need more time to go, we, we need to strategize more on the, on the multiple languages, and how to do that and to do it well, so we're probably going to do that in the fall.
It looks like a wonderful campaign, and I'm sure it'll be to, not to our benefit, and also to, and I'm sure you're already looking at this, just the local places to advertise, and areas of the, you know, areas of communities where our students currently are.
Yes, definitely. With this, this is, we also do community print, community media placement, they're just not part of this, because we're just talking about this, but we do that every year. We understand we want to be supportive, and also, we believe our parents particularly are reading the community press, and the ethnic and community media.
Yeah, and some of those are so small that we probably could be their lifeline.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, having, you know, we started my footsteps there, sensitive to this ethnic media.
Good.
Any other questions or comments or? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the team, thank you.
Look forward to hearing the results.
Same here, we're excited, we're nervous, next Monday, okay? It's going to come in. It's on Monday. Exactly. Thank you, guys, thank you.
All right, now we have our second discussion from a chancellor, Vice Chancellor of University Advancement, James Gallo. Could you provide us an update?
Sure, thank you. I'm here to provide an update on a few items, including CUNY Tuesday, a recent match that we launched to encourage endowment giving, and an event that the chancellor hosted for foundation chairs recently. In terms of CUNY Tuesday, we saw a 21% increase year-over-year from the most recent fiscal year, so we raised $3.7 million from just over 5,000 gifts. I think it was a great effort. Each school participated in CUNY Tuesday. We had a conversation recently about ways to continue to improve it, to continue to drive results. I should acknowledge my colleague, Maite, next to me, and her team, who were very supportive in the marketing efforts around CUNY Tuesday, so I was pleased with it. I think most of the schools and the presidents were as well. Transitioning, as many of you know, we had $40 million in one-time strategic funding given to the university. After many conversations, we've allocated $4 million of that funding to provide a 25% match for new endowment gifts, right, to support scholarships and fellowships. We hope to convert this $4 million in one-time funding into an endowment of $20 million across the university. So if a donor makes a gift of $100,000 to create a new endowed scholarship, they would receive a $25,000 match. We shared this program with the presidents in a recent COPPS meeting, there was a lot of enthusiasm, I've also shared it with all of the advancement executives from throughout the university. I had a call this morning with one of the presidents. I hope that we can deplete, utilize this $4 million in funding by the end of the calendar year, to sort of provide proof of concept, if you will, so that we can go to our funding partners and request additional funding for these efforts, right? So it's converting one-time funds into permanent funds. As everyone here probably knows, if we have a $20 million endowment, it should kick out, pay out $800,000 to $1 million in support annually. So after four years, and once we're fully established, we will have recouped everything, basically. Last but not least, the chancellor hosted an event with foundation chairs last week. We had just about 20 representatives from the different college foundations attend. It was a lively conversation about best practices and how we can continue to work together. We, we also shared with them this 25% match, which they were enthusiastic about. Many in the audience have requested that we, we do more of this, so we will continue to do this event with more frequency, with more regularity. And there was just, I think, a lot of good feeling in the room, and given the challenging economic times, the challenging budget times, philanthropic dollars are, are more important than ever before, and we stress that to our colleagues, and, and I think they certainly got it. And, and last but not least, Senior Vice Chancellor Grace asked me to introduce a new face at this table. Perhaps the chancellor may, may want to say a few words, Jeff Rotis, who joins us as the Vice Chancellor for Government Affairs. I think in future meetings, Jeff will, will have some updates for all of us. Jeff joins us from the mayor's office, where he served as Chief of Staff, to the first deputy mayor, and I'm sure many of you know him at this table.
Welcome, Jeff, glad to have you here.
And we celebrated him a little bit when we, we made the appointment at the last board meeting, and, you know, lucky to have another wonderful CUNY alum join the family, a Baruch graduate, so delighted to have him onboard.
Thank you, excited to be here.
Yes, I concur, I, the idea of having an opportunity to have Jeff Rotis with us, as so many of us go way back, all right, to, to the journey for the city of New York, and what Jeff has done, and an integral part of that. So, very honored to have you here, and look forward to the continued accomplishments that you can bestow on, on CUNY. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm looking forward to a robust state legislative agenda, and a robust federal legislative agenda, so I know that if anybody could head that, you can, so I'm, I'm really, I'm really happy. Any other of the statements or, or congra-- yes, go ahead.
Yes, Vice Chancellor, just to go back over the opportunity we had to meet, and the chancellor had to meet with the heads of the foundation, and you said to review the best practices. Can you give us, I know time is of the essence today, of course, but can you give us some of the areas or the challenges, or just what were their thoughts about what they feel that one, as the board, can be helpful with, or what they feel can be, you know, that we can have in terms of advancement?
So two sort of parallel or concurrent conversations took place. Last Wednesday, I met with the advancement executives, and there's been some turnover there, and they requested some information on best practices for their boards, including sort of committee structures, ways to recruit new board members, endowment payout for each of the schools. They had several questions that they all thought it would be beneficial to just share across CUNY. So my office is conducting a survey on those questions, and we're going to provide the survey responses, the answers to both the advancement executives, as well as the foundation chairs, because there was a lot of overlap in, in the questions. And then, we do want to provide training for both professional staff and volunteer staff on just working together and best practices there, and that could be, you know, how to run a board, something as simple as running a board meeting, to maintaining minutes, to filing your Form 990, to best practices around investment management. So there, there's a lot of work to do.
We had talked early on in this committee, when we started out, the, the naming rights and, you know, setting up those protocols, we had talked about a possibility of having a mentorship program, you know, pairing presidents together, some, I mean, there's been so much change in the presidencies, but, you know, seeing who has the ability, and to pair them with someone who might be less agile at this. And so, that's something that, that I don't even know if the certain, the current constellation allows for that, but.
But, but it is that you pointed out, because I think a variation of that came particularly at the meeting with the, with the foundation chairs, right, that they felt that they could benefit from, at some point, sector conversations, right? So the, the two-year schools have more things that look alike, spend some time together, and the professionals, so they wanted that. But also, if I can connect it to your question, Trustee Wilkins, I mean, it, it went from a more understanding, which I think will benefit us, about all our guidelines and rules, you know, from naming, all those naming rights, which, you know, sometimes there's institutional memory, but we change, right? So we think that there's a role there for more training and information, going both to the staffing in the colleges and to the foundation board members, right? And, and that was, I mean, you would assume that they didn't want that, that was very well-received.
Oh, yeah.
By the chairs, right? They felt that the more they knew, the better they were able to navigate the relationship in a very positive way. There was conversation even from things like, not all foundations, for example, charge an administrative fee for the grants. I mean, there's a lot of variation on that in, in higher ed and in many places, right? And they wanted to know what each one was doing, which, again, benefits us to the extent that, you know, there's more uniformity, they should be able to do some of their own decisions on things, but things like that, they were very willing for us to engage them more with those kinds of things. So I, I think it was a very, very, I think, you know, positive meeting, and, and, you know, when you have to actually break the room to do the, the standard program, because they were so, you know, and maybe they didn't know each other. So I, I think it was a really good, and, you know, the, the idea of the $4 million to generate match was extremely well-received. You know, it then allowed James to then echo that with the, with the folks of the advancement teams. So, I mean, I think it was a good, a lot of pride on CUNY Tuesday, I mean, even some friendly, you know, competition among them, which is always healthy, right? So, I mean, I thought it was, it was a nice, a very positive engagement, and we have opportunities to do a lot more things. I love answers, partly your question and yours.
Any other, any other items? I have one more item, and then we're going to adjourn. First is, the, the next idea would be, now that you've done your own foundation presidents, is probably to assemble circles of foundations outside, external private foundations and community foundations, to have that same kind of meeting with you, so that you can then promote and engage them around CUNY, you know, for the 26 universities, or 27, I never remember the number, Derek will keep.
25.
25, me the, yeah.
But who's counting?
Yeah, but who's counting?
I mean, you don't have another one, though.
Well, we, we've done, and maybe you think you're off.
community foundations, to have that same kind of meeting with you, so that you can then promote and engage them around CUNY, you know, for the 26 universities or 27. I never remember the number. Derek will--
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
But who's counting?
Yeah, but who's counting?
You have another one, though.
Well, we've done, and maybe you think of a separate thing, vice, so just correct me if I'm going, but A, I know, for example, the provost had a meeting with Friends of CUNY Foundation types, right, as we're doing some other things on the strategic plan. So that was one. I've been in at least two meetings with funders that, I mean, that come from different sectors.
Either way.
The, for example, all the national funders that do workforce funding, they have meetings and they rotate, and have dinner, and when they had the one in New York, I was one of the guests speaking to-- and there were some other people there that know us well and they're friends, but there were others that were new, so there's been some work in that front. I have also been, I spoke at the board meeting of the New York Community Trust, who's been very supportive of our programs for many years, the Bank of New York Mellon Foundation Board.
It's exactly those kind of things that I'm talking about, and also to bring them together, because there's nothing like healthy competition.
Yep.
You know? The only, the last thing I would say, unless there's any other discussions, items, any questions? I would like, you know, this is the beginning of the year. You have-- go ahead. I'm so sorry.
I just wanted to ask a quick question.
Absolutely.
So for the advertisement going back, I just realized, I think a lot of the CUNY campuses rank top among the US News ranking for social mobility. I don't know if that's gonna be a useful piece in the advertisement. They're like top 10.
Yes, I mean, the campaign takes you to a page, and that page sort of, you know, talks about some of the value propositions of CUNY, and I think some of the rankings maybe, you know, some of the rankings. If not, if they're not on that main page, we're also working, I didn't present today, but I could, we're also helping the 10 schools that had the most sort of enrollment decline with two pieces. We're either helping them with funds or we're driving the campaigns for them, and we're building, and in those who are really sort of zooming in on the rankings. Yes, I mean, it's hard, because it's not CUNY. It's all the schools, and it's 20, 25 schools, but yes, actually, there's good news on SBS this week, and good news on Baruch did well in the rankings, and City College, too. So, yeah, we have those in the pages, and so--
Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Yep.
Great, thank you. Anything else? No, okay. So the last thing, it's the first meeting of the year. We have a whole year to go, so I would ask that you give us information in advance. Let us be prepared. Let us work together as a team, and, you know, so that when we come here, we're all well-informed and could really support each other and enrich each other's thinking. All right, having no other questions or suggestions, I ask that this meeting is adjourned. Maite.